All right, thank you and welcome to our Kattati City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 14th. And we will begin with roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Delauso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And again, just as a reminder, this is the Kattati City Council and successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for the 24th of May. And there are a few introductions I'd like to do before we get started with our meeting.
It's the 14th of May.
It's the 14th. I looked at the number 1-4 and I came up with 24 in my head. This is going to be a long meeting tonight.
New balance.
Wow. Here we go.
Glad you're retired.
Thank you very much, yes. So I am your embarrassed mayor, John Delauso. We have our vice mayor to my left, Wendy Skilman, and councilmembers far left, Mark Landman, John Moore at the far end, and Susan Harvey. We have our city manager, Damian Obid, here. Our city attorney, Robin Donahue. Our chief of police, Michael Parrish. Our city engineer, director of public works, Craig Scott. Our administrative services director, Angela Quarter. I'm looking for other staff and there are none. And our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. So at this point in time, we have our pledge of allegiance. If I could get everybody to stand and join us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. So we're at item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. We actually have three different meetings, a regular meeting and two special meetings that we need to approve. And I'd like to take those one at a time if we could, starting with the Kattati City Council regular meeting on April 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? To five oh in favor. And item B is the special meeting of the city council on April 30.
Move to approve.
Second. I'll second then.
Okay, it was a slow second, but it came in, that was good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
You were waiting for that.
Yeah, I was waiting for that.
We have one abstention, councilmember Harvey, and then four yeses. And finally, the special meeting on the 7th of May.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, please show that's a five oh vote in favor. Now, I, we're at item five, which is a reception, but there's a little something we need to do in advance of that. Is staff going to start that off, or do you want me just to dive into it?
I just, I'll only just announce it, I guess, that we have many recent members of our design review committee here, which is fabulous to see your faces again. And anyway, it'll be, it'll be nice to formally honor you for everything that you did for the city. I personally really appreciate it and just hand it off to the mayor.
Great, thank you. Yes, we were thanking the members and a couple of former members who are not here this evening of the design review committee. And there's been some administrative shifts going on in Kattati, so it's become more of a staff task and slash planning commission staff task. So with that, I'm going to start with the people who I do not believe are in this room. I can do that, I'm pretty sure. But if you are in this room, I didn't see you, please speak up. Is Jay West here? No. Jay West served on the design review committee from 2015 to 2017. And this is going to be a bad night, I'm telling you, I'm hitting the microphone. Carl Lampert? Yes, Carl, you are here. Please come up to the podium if you would.
How did I get there?
Well, you're not going to be the only one, trust me on that. So Carl served from 2015 to 2017. And I'm going to have others come up, so you can just kind of hang out. And then if you guys have something you'd like to say that would be more than delightful. Mike Connell, I do not believe is here this evening. He served from 2015 to 2019. Sally Glendenning, not here. Served from 2008 to 2019. It's a long period of time. Then we have Eris Weaver. Come on up, Eris, who served from 2013 to 2019. And finally, Tim Morgan, who served from 2009 to 2019. So before we do the pomp and circumstance and all that kind of good stuff, I'd like to just open it to you guys. If you have any words, you can, we'll start with Lars and go through in order. You have anything you'd like to say? You don't have to, you're not committed to saying anything, but if you'd like to, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, anyway, I enjoyed being on the committee and it was nice that, you know, the community got to sort of take a look at things as they were in process, all the developments that we have going on in Kattati. And I think too, that our committee came up with a lot of really good questions and we passed it on to the planning commission and so forth. I just, I had a really good time at it. I was a little disappointed that a lot of the meetings were canceled, but other than that, you know, and I know they're canceled for various reasons, but we had a good time and I think we had a very good group too. So we represented a pretty broad spectrum of, from all the way in building, the landscape architecture, and my area's energy. So we had a, had a very good time.
Sure. I just appreciated having the opportunity to serve the city and especially having been on the other side of the podium as a developer when we were building Frog Song, that tried to keep that experience in, in mind as was the person making the decisions and taking the votes and really enjoyed it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would say thank you too for the opportunity to serve. I think in the 10 years I was on, it was always amazing to know that the members of the committee would always come prepared, always have good ideas and supported by the things in the council and whatnot. So it was really enjoyable, I'm going to miss it. And that's about it, thank you.
Great, no, thank you guys for your service. Hang on just a second. Anyone from the council have any words? I'll start with councilmember Landman.
I'd be happy to. First of all, let me put my eyeballs in so I can actually focus just a little bit better, that helps. You know, about, oh, 10 years ago, one of the first assignments I had was liaison to design review. So I spent a lot of years, you and I probably started about the same time, I think, Tim, coming to meetings and watching this. And we really have a deep appreciation for both the committee, the work you did, and the people certainly that served on there. You know, you hear that term unsung heroes. I, it's kind of a cliche, but in this case, it's actually not. It fits because you guys were essentially sweating over the details constantly, small details. And it sounds small details, but those add up to a big thing. Those were really the details that mattered in the final thing. So it made a difference. So I appreciate your service. And I enjoyed being at the meetings and watching you. It was well run and well done, so thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Yes, thank you for all of your combined years of service and to the city. And it's just, it's nice to have people taking that first look at the designs and coming up with, like you were saying, the really good questions, thinking about how the rest of the citizens and the kind of city would be, what they would want to know, what they would want to ask, and really representing everybody's interests. So thank you very much for the time that you spent on that committee.
Thanks. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you so much for your service. I think as Mark pointed out, you know, it's the details that you guys get into that, you know, we're kind of at the policy level, but you actually had to dig down in to those dirty details. And sometimes stuff had to come back multiple times because of some of those details. But you guys put in definitely the work to make sure that the products are representative of our community. And I really appreciate the work that you did because I know it's a sacrifice to have to give your time to do that, so.
I just want to add something to that. Remember, one of our biggest discussions was the color of the paving across the street here.
Colors are our business.
Yeah. Yes, I do remember a couple of discussions around that, but thank you for your service.
Councilmember Moore?
Very appreciative. I think it's great when, when people step up and serve the community. I think you guys did a phenomenal job. And, and I don't know if you were, I think that there's still an opening in planning, so if you'd like to keep, continue to pursue that, they are accepting applications. And thank you so much. I think you guys did a tremendous job. And sometimes it's the unsung heroes that are doing some of the light work. And I think it's great. Thank you.
If I could add one more comment?
No.
Just one, because it just occurred to me that, you know, we, we did, we did the work, we were up here doing the votes and all that, but the staff supported us in, in planning, the support that they provided was phenomenal. We couldn't have done it without them. So thank you to them.
Yeah, those are very important words, Tim, I appreciate that. So before you guys leave now, we have a lovely little plaque we'd like to hand out. And I'm sure the city manager will be delighted to walk around and get photographs with his iPhone.
Can I see one? I think it's up on there. Wendy's kidding, okay.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
No, I'm here.
I'm still here.
And so to celebrate, we'll take about a 10-minute recess. And there are some refreshments over on the far table over there. All right, we'd like to reconvene our meeting. And we'll go back, we are now on item six, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council decides to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statement that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evening from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. And I've made a mental note because I just bought a new phone and I need to re-subscribe to Nixel. And I will do that. On Saturday, May 18th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m., the City of Kattati will be holding a public workshop at City Hall to talk about potential improvements to Civic Center Park. Bring your imagination and come join the discussion. And finally, Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Now we are at one of our favorite parts of our agenda, where we have our honorary mayor. And today, from Lawrence Jones Middle School, we have Kaze de Romelair. Please come up, Kaze, if you could, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, so I, my name is Kaze de Romelair, and I'm an eighth grade student at Lawrence Jones Middle School in Rona Park. And I am in a separate program within Lawrence Jones called the Expeditionary Learning Program. I've lived in Kattati my entire life, and I enjoy playing sports such as basketball, baseball, and some of my goals are to hopefully play sports at the next level past high school and get a good education at a good college.
Excellent. Sorry, I turned my mic off. So what we're going to do is we're going to go around the council dais here and see if there's any questions or comments that councilmembers may have for you. And then we'll give you a chance to introduce anybody that you may have come with tonight. So we'll start with councilmember Moore, if you have any questions or comments.
I don't. Welcome, Kaze, for coming over. Primarily just interest in sports at the moment?
Yes. I also have some other interests. I'm very interested in possibly studying business. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
And so I'm assuming you're in eighth grade, so you're finishing up the expeditionary learning?
Yes, I am.
A pretty good program through.
It is.
Lawrence Jones, quite a few kids have gone through there, so. Do you have any idea what you're looking toward as you move on?
Yes, mainly just the freedom of being in high school and being able to learn more and getting to choose my own electives. Because as much as I love expeditionary learning, the, your elective, you don't really get to choose. It's more just different projects you're working on within the program. And the rest of the school kind of gets to choose your own electives, so I'm excited to be able to choose a different sub, subject that I'm able to do.
Terrific, well, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I'm very familiar with the Expeditionary Learning Program. Have you been in it all three years?
No, I came in in seventh grade and I'm finishing up eighth grade, so I was not here in sixth grade.
Oh, great, yeah. My, both my daughter and my son went through the program. My daughter actually was in the very first program that they had. So it's been around for a while, they're a great, great set of teachers. So I have a question for you on that. So you guys get to do a lot of trips and plan a lot of, all your planning for all of those. What is one of the trips and the planning for it that sticks out most in your mind?
When I'm thinking of probably the most planning, where you have to go for a trip, it's probably our yearly trip to Yosemite. So seventh and eighth graders both go to Yosemite. And in seventh grade, you kind of just stay in the valley. And then in eighth grade, you go backpacking for three days. And when packing comes to mind, you have to think the backpacking because it's snowing, it's, it's 20 degrees, you have to work on bringing the proper gear, but also not bringing too much. So that's probably the most packing and preparation we have to do, is we have to pack the backpacks very specifically, and we have to bring clothes that are suitable for that kind of weather. So that's definitely probably the, the biggest trip we have to go on.
Great, yes, I've been on many of those trips with the kids. It's a wonderful program. I really like the way they take the different subjects and kind of meld them together into the activities, so you're actually learning while having fun. So I think that that will do you well in your future, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Susan. Let's go with councilmember Landman.
Harvey, you caught me unprepared, there we go. Well, Kaze, welcome, good to see you here. So you mentioned being excited about being able to choose your own electives. So with that potentially coming, what do you think you'd be leaning toward? What would be the electives, at least right now, that sound kind of interesting to you?
Right now, I primarily, I'm thinking about design, not only because that's what my dad does, and I've seen him do that and I've learned a little bit about that, but definitely interested in design and being able to create my own things and kind of make it my own. And I'm also interested, as I mentioned earlier, business. So there's sports management, and I've been looking, kind of looking into that, seeing if that would be anything I'm interested in. But primarily design and just being able to create things.
Interesting. So I can definitely count on you, if I get an email from you, there won't be two spaces after sentences?
Yes.
Good, that's good to know. Well, nice meeting you, Kaze, thanks for being here.
Nice meeting you too.
You know, only people who do design work, that drives them nuts, because I do still, people still hit the space bar twice and it's like, really?
Looking at you, city manager, oh, good.
Classic, classic.
Give him a look, Kaze.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Hi, thank you for being here this evening. Have you shadowed at any of the high schools, or do you know for sure which one you want to go to?
So I haven't really shadowed at the high schools, but I have gone tours them. So I looked at Tech Technology High School, I've looked at that, obviously Rancho. And I also looked at St. Vincent a little bit, but I'm trying to lean towards more local schools, so I'm probably going to Rancho Kattati. And not only just because that's kind of where my school funnels into, but just because I want to, I want to stay local and I definitely want to continue with the path I'm on through the, that district.
Okay, no, that's great. I'm glad that you've looked into it. I know sometimes kind of eighth graders think, I have to go to this school, so it's great that you've looked at the variety that we have in the area. So I want to thank you again for being our vice mayor, or our vice mayor, oh my gosh.
No.
I just gave you my title. Our honorary mayor.
I'm glad I'm not the only one making mistakes, I know, I think it is, it's spreading. Kaze, I had a couple of questions for you. Yeah, that's good to put the feelers out. I know when my son was at Mountain Shadows Middle School, he had done that. He had got, he and his, there was groups of friends, you know how that works, right? And they went to St. Vincent, they took a test, they all got accepted. Then they all decided the next week after they got their acceptance letters, we're going to the ranch. Like, really? Thanks, thanks for all that work, I appreciate it. So, but you know, it, it's also a helpful thing, you didn't really mention it, but I'm sure it's just ingrained in you, that, you know, hanging out with your friends, moving around to that, whatever high school you choose, is also another factor that's involved with that.
Definitely, yes.
Yeah. You know, sports is a business. It's funny how, you know, you're interested in sports and you're looking at maybe something to do with business, and the two of them definitely go hand in hand. So I think that's very interesting. So I always like to give a homework assignment, I warned you before the meeting. But before I do that, do you have anybody you'd like to introduce tonight?
Sure.
You can't, you can't say no, because I know you have family out there. Just warning you.
Yes, so my mom, some of you might know her, Liz de Romelair, and then my dad, Dennis de Romelair, I bet a lot of you know him, and then my younger brother, Jett. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
It looks like he just came from baseball practice.
Oh, yes, he did, yeah.
So, your homework assignment, it's not a really tough one. You know, going, going back and talking to your friends, either in the neighborhoods or at school, and it, it's helpful for us to hear from an age group that none of us represent, let me just be clear on that, about, you know, we could use this kind of maybe service in Kattati. Here's what's missing for us as teens. So, you know, we'd like to hear that. Can we always take action on that? No. But there are times in the past where honorary mayors have made suggestions and we've come through with, with, you know, making that happen. So, you know, ask around, you've got a couple of weeks before our next meeting, we'd love to hear something when you come back about that. And other than that, it's a school night, so you're free to go and you guys can go home, you don't have to stay here. But next week, make sure your parents have their iPhones and their cameras ready to go.
I'll make sure.
Excellent, all right, thank you very much, Kaze, great having you here.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are on item eight, which is approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No proposed changes, mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Now we're at item nine, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And I do have a couple of speaker cards, and we'll start with Heidi Chesney. Welcome.
Hello, Heidi Chesney, Charles Street Village. I just wanted first, before I ask my question that I have on the card, is to thank the city for taking care of the corner lot of Charles Street and East Kattati Avenue. I'm just assuming that you had something to do with it. And if you didn't, thank you for taking care of the bernal, across from Frog Song. That's on, 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 on what you've done there. What I need to do is try to get Burbank Corporate Headquarters to take care of the rest of it, which is up this high. Anyway, getting that off. All I wanted to know was, if Charles Street is, the street improvement is on schedule, what is that schedule and what are the details? And that's the only question I have. The other question about the hotel was already answered.
All right, great, thank you. And we do have your contact info, including an email, so I'm sure staff will get back to you on this.
That would be great.
All right, thank you very much. And then I have a second card, last card I have is with, from Eris Weaver.
So I'm speaking in my role as the executive director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, and I just wanted to thank the city for your support in, for Bike to Work Day last week by cosponsoring an Energizer station over at the train station on East Kattati. Over, close to 1,500 people throughout the county and about 50 here in Kattati rode their bikes and were able to get some, get cheered on and get snacks and goodies and stuff. It's a fun event to help support cycling in the, in the community, and we couldn't do it without the help of all the community partners who help do things, so I appreciate that. And then also wanted to let you know about an event that we're having tomorrow night and invite any of you who would care to join us, it's called the Ride of Silence. This is an international event to, in which we ride slowly, it's a short distance, and in silence, to commemorate cyclists who have been killed or injured on the roads. It's a surprisingly moving event to participate in, and it's been particularly up for me over the last year as the most recent incident with some cyclists hit out by two rock, were both friends of mine, one of whom serves on the sheriff's search and rescue team with me, and the other who is manager of a bike shop in Santa Rosa. And then I also spent a lot of time sitting in a trial around a bike-related death over the last year. So it's just a way to memorialize folks who have, who have had injuries and crashes. That event's at 7:00 o'clock at the Coalition offices in Santa Rosa. And if you are interested in more, bikesonoma.org is where we have more information. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on citizens' business? Yes, Mr. Berich.
the last year as the most recent incident with some cyclists hit out by two rock, were both friends of mine, one of whom serves on the Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team with me and the other who is manager of a bike shop in Santa Rosa. And then I also spent a lot of time sitting in a trial around a bike-related death over the last year. So, it's just a way to memorialize folks who have, who have had injuries and crashes. So, that event's at seven o'clock at the Coalition offices in Santa Rosa and if you are interested in more, bikesonoma.org is where we have more information. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on citizens' business? Yes, Mr. Berich.
Good evening, council. For the benefit of the people here, the audience and the folks at home, my name is George Berich, a former city councilman here. And I'd first like to speak to the last city council meeting, what, some two weeks ago. I sat here in the front row and I witnessed Citizen Lori Alderman come forward and make a plea to the city council for a formal apology from Councilmember Moore regarding a despicable email that he sent out stating that he called her batshit crazy. And this issue has gone on for some time, as you well know. She's come here with multiple times with, with complaints and concerns regarding how the city council is moving in a very unprofessional manner and not being able to take these matters seriously. So, what Lori did is she brought in a verified copy of the email that she obtained from the city clerk and she went over and she pinned it on the corkboard on the wall there. And later in the evening, Mr. Moore stepped down and he ran down there and he took it off the wall and confronted her privately after the meeting had adjourned and had some words with her about it. And what I'd like to say is that, look, let's, let's review a little bit. When Bert Lathrop had his lot, his vacant lot in Katati, there was a shipping container on that lot and the council brought the issue forward that there were some visual blight regarding the shipping container. And Councilman Moore publicly stated on the record here, when we were discussing how many shipping containers are actually in public view in this town and in other towns, that he felt that, quote unquote, "the container looked like shit." And I complained about this type of language and this, this, these derogatory remarks, bringing the council's reputation further down. And I want to remind you, since you're not going to do anything about it, I would like to ask the council with a show of hands if any of you believe in the Code of Ethics for city council members that you all passed. If you just raise a hand for the public and see if you, those of you who signed on to that actually believe in it. And let the record reflect that nobody has risen their hands. Let me take a, a quote out of the Code of Conduct, item three, which says, "Conduct of Members. Councilmembers shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the characters, the character, or motives of other members of the city council, boards, commissions, committees, staff, or the public. The professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach."
Mr. Berich, if I could ask you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, so, this is a clear violation of your city Code of Ethics. I think Lori Alderman deserves an apology. I'd like you to file an ethics charge on Mr. Moore about this and bring respectability back to this body. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, before you sit down, do you have anything for, on consent?
Quickly, briefly, on item A, on the P1 sewer project, since the last city meeting, you've had a, you had a budget meeting this, this week, last week? And the P1 sewer project, as I recall, was almost $2 million over budget and we had a little discussion about that at the last city council meeting. And I wasn't able to attend the budget meeting, but since you're going to finalize this issue tonight, I almost think that you're at a point now where why even have budget meetings? You should be, you're at a point now where you can, you should be offering companies like Gelati Construction a blank check because if you think they're going to go over and there's no accountability, no investigation to why these, these, these projects are going so grossly over budget, maybe you should just offer these companies a blank check. I don't know how you run a city, how you make a budget, how you stay, stay in the black on the budget when these types of sewer projects and public work projects almost double in costs without much of a discussion about it, other than the project was redesigned. Well, that doesn't do us taxpayers much good and as city leaders, you have a real responsibility to, to be very transparent and go the extra mile when these projects go over budget to this extent. So, you're going to finalize this project tonight on the consent calendar, but it really concerns me that we have this lackadaisical attitude that there's, that the taxpayers just have to keep hitting the bill for these projects that go over budget, over budget into the millions of dollars without much concern, not much discussion, and very little accountability. And it's very concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on either citizens' business or any of the consent items? All right, seeing no one, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will now move to item 10, which is our consent calendar where we have, looks like, three items on here.
And I'm sorry, before you-
Yes.
Before you make, or have any discussion or make any motions on it, I just wanted to point out real quick that on, each of you should have, just, there were some typographical updates to the item on, sorry, it is actually on packet page six. Ignore what I just said. On packet page 16, there's a resolution, the second whereas from the bottom says, "The St. Joseph's Water Main Replacement Has Been Completed For A Total," including, it says, "Construction Management, Construction Design Support." That was an error, so it's, it's including "All Change Orders and Extra Work," is what, how it should read, "For A Total, Including All Change Orders and Extra Work." So, we're just going to strike that part of the resolution when you guys consider it. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So, with that one correction on that one item, is there a motion or are there any items anybody would like to pull?
Move to approve, including the corrections that were given by the city manager.
Okay.
I would move to second with the corrections.
All right, motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show it's a 5-0 vote in favor to approve items A, B, and C on consent. Item 11 is direction on future agenda items. I am open to anything? Nothing? 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 And Councilmember Harvey? And nothing? Okay, it's a nothing. We will then go to item 12, the regular agenda, and the first item is appointment of John Bakker as city attorney.
So, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, now, if you would please look at the, on your, on your, each of your, on your table in front of each of you is a slightly updated version, just to correct some typographical errors that were in the, the one that's in the packet. And I, I guess I'll start this by saying that I'm, I'm sad to say that, although I'm sure she's not sad, that Robin is retiring at the end of May and after, anyway, after a long career in, in municipal law. So, it'll be, it's a bummer for me personally, but I'm sure it's great for her. Maybe she'll send postcards occasionally. Anyway, to, to replace her, if that's possible, we had, Robin and I had some discussions about possible options and then, and we also internally considered some options about different ways to, to fill the position. And one of the, one of the options was this fellow by the name of John Bakker, who is also an attorney with Myers-Navey. And in the packet, his, his resume is there, so he's very well qualified. He's, and he, in addition to his extensive experience in various types of governmental law, he also is in a city attorney currently with the City of Dublin. So, he would come to us with a lot of experience and I think do a good job for the city. So, as, as one of the direct employees of the council, this item comes before you to make a decision. If you, if you agree to appoint him, you would be doing it via this resolution that's before you tonight. He, he could not make it tonight, just so you know, but he would, he would start filling the role at our first meeting in June, June 11th. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right, great, thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager?
Just one.
Okay.
So, since we only have up to 4:59 on May 31st to call Robin and just if one of us might have an issue at 5:01 PM, I'm assuming that we will be able to obtain that information in case we have a pressing issue.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a, it's sort of a-
Funny timing.
It was something we had kind of a laugh about, but that's technically her last day and, you know, if, if there was, you know, God forbid, like an earthquake or something at 5:01, you need, you know, you need someone that's going to be legal counsel and you don't want to, I don't, I don't want to be calling you at midnight after your last day. So, that, that's why, the time, even though it seems kind of anal, maybe.
It's just rather amusing.
Are you anticipating something?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
You know, you never know what might happen.
This is true.
I don't know that an attorney would be the first people I'd call if an earthquake occurs.
Well, not an earthquake, but there-
Probably not.
There could be a matter.
Sure. All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Some comments after public comment, but no questions.
All right, great. Well, I'll go ahead and open this up for a public comment if anyone has any comments. Mr. Berich.
Counsel, I don't have to remind you that this is a very, very important decision for the council to make. I have no information about Mr. Bakker, but the fact is that he can't be here tonight for such an important interview and important questions that you should be asking him tonight. He's not here. You spend so much time interviewing our honorary mayors, but it appears that you're going to avoid the chance to interview probably one of the most important city staff members for the city. I'm going to recommend and request that you postpone this vote for 30 days until the, Mr. Bakker can be here and answer your questions thoroughly, introduce himself to the community. We're paying a very, very high salary for our city attorneys. The Navey Law Office has plenty of, plenty of attorneys who can fill in for Ms. Donahue in case you need anything. We can have a temporary attorney be brought in for the next meeting if you feel that you're not ready to make that decision to hire the, the new, the new man for the, for the job. It's highly unusual for a city council to vote on a new city attorney without interviewing him in person, him or her in person. Very unusual, very unorthodoxed, very dangerous. I'm very much in favor of having a new city attorney who has common sense, who will try to avoid lawsuits at all costs, try to bring your claimants from the city to the city with the city staff together to try to avoid costly unwanted litigation. We haven't had that in the past. It is sorely needed now more than ever. And I would request that you postpone this to a later time when he can be here. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Yes, please, come up. No, come up to the podium, yeah.
Just off the record, I agree with the gentleman's concerns.
Okay.
I think it should be better vetted than, I, I don't know what the process has been. So, that's kind of, I'm in the dark on that, but just on face value, I, I agree.
No, thank you very much. Hold on, we'll wait for public comment to close.
Sure.
Anyone else like to speak on this topic? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to council.
And if I could-
Vice Mayor, yes.
Sure, just to clarify, we actually did interview Mr. Bakker. We did it in a closed session since it's a personnel matter that's held in a closed session and we actually reviewed many resumes and vetted several people. So, that was done. So, that can be clear. And then, sure, absolutely. And then also to clarify for Mr. Berich, Myers-Navey actually is our city attorney who helps us with our meetings. They don't help us with litigation. That actually is our insurance company. They have attorneys who come and represent us in those instances and they make independent decisions about reviewing potential lawsuits. So, just to clarify whose role is what.
All right, thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. Any comments off type with Councilmember Moore and work our way down the table? Any comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Councilmember Harvey?
I was extremely satisfied with the interview that we had and he was, I think, will represent the city well and I think that he did pose some of the characteristics that Mr. Berich spoke about and I think that the community will be very accepting of him. And it's unfortunate that he have another engagement tonight, but I'm sure that he will be here in the future.
All right, thanks. Councilmember Landman.
Caught me unprepared again.
Caught you off guard again.
You're good that way. I like that. Well, yeah, I, I'm going to echo my colleagues' comments, looking at Mr. Bakker's background, his qualifications, which are very extensive, and having had a chance, as you would expect, to interview him, of course, I'm completely comfortable, particularly with our city, our current city council, Ms. Donahue's recommendation. That's what put it over the top for me. And I'll just take a moment to say very briefly that typically in this situation, when somebody's leaving that's done a good job, we talk about big shoes to fill. I, I don't know if that's the right way to go because what you're essentially saying is somebody has large feet and I don't, I don't know if it's exactly the type, the best way to give praise, but I will say this, that our city attorney, Robin Donahue, has done a fine job for us for years and she's earned the trust and confidence of all of us, I believe, and certainly myself. I can say that without qualification. So, I will say to Mr. Bakker, the ceiling's been set high. I look forward to seeing what you can do, but there'll be some measuring to do. So, thank you for your years of service, Robin. It has been a great pleasure.
Thank you very much.
And Vice Mayor Skilman.
Well, I was going to wait when we're meeting to say nice things about Robin since it's not technically your last meeting.
Of course.
But yes, we'll save some of those, but no, it's, it's been an absolute pleasure and knowing that if we have questions or issues that we can email or call and get succinct answers and find legal guidance. So, we will definitely miss you, but know that there will be many fine adventures and though we have tried to keep it entertaining, I, I know that you will have other things to occupy your time, so thank you.
Again, yeah, Robin, thank you, but yeah, you'll have one more meeting, so we will save the accolades. And if we may forget by that next meeting, which would be awful, wouldn't it though? Oh, can't imagine. And yes, Mr. Bakker, not only did we interview him in closed session, he also attended and stayed for a full city council meeting about a month ago. He was at the staff table there, so he's, and he's been, you know, queued in on all the topics from Robin as well. So, with that, I would look for a recommendation.
I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution appointing John Bakker of Myers-Navey as city attorney and successor agency to the former redevelopment agency attorney.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 5-0 vote in favor to appoint Mr. Bakker as our new city attorney starting in the month of June. Thank you all very much. And we will go to our next regular agenda item, which is recommendation to City Selection Committee for the North Coast Representative for the California Coastal Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I know it says Lauren, I'm Lauren.
It does, it says Lauren, that's why I looked that way first, so, okay.
So, it's a short, it's a short staff report. Tomorrow in Rona Park, there's a City Selection Committee meeting, it's a special meeting of the City Selection Committee for the sole purpose of appointment of the seat for the California Coastal Commission. This is the North Coast, I believe that's what they call it, the North Coast Seat. And they, the committee has received just one request for the position and that was from Vice Mayor Fudge from the Town of Windsor, which is in the packet.
is in the packet, and I guess we'll leave it at that, it's pretty straightforward, thanks.
Yep, absolutely. Any questions for staff? I can't imagine. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, if anybody has any comments on this topic. Seeing no one, we'll close that same public hearing and bring it back to council. Any comments from any council member before we make a motion?
I think it just has to give you directions, so I'd like to suggest the direction of supporting Mayor Fudge.
I would second that direction. Yes, I would agree as well for supporting Vice Mayor.
All right.
So, have you been well-directed?
I've been directed as much as I can, I don't know if I can follow directions, but I will do my best, so, thank you. That meeting's at 3 o'clock tomorrow in the city of Roanoke Park, I will be there and I will vote. All right, with that, we will move to item 13, the city manager's report.
So, it just so happens that there's a lot going on right now, so bear with me and get comfortable, I'll try to be quick. All right, so we have just a, kind of a PSA here. On leak alerts, with warmer weather comes an increase in irrigation, people turn the irrigation systems on, and often after having it inactive for the winter, they find water leaks, it's the annual ritual of the spring, is fixing your water systems. So, one of the ways, besides the obvious way, that your yard's flooded or something, to eliminate and to find costly leaks is to sign up for leak alerts, and leak alerts notify the utility customer via email or text of possible leaks, and to sign up, you can visit the city website under either Resident or Business Services and click on the sign up button for leak alerts. And then, also, there was the Butter and Eggs Festival down in Petaluma just recently, and our cadets and some of our officers assisted Petaluma with traffic control, and they reciprocate Kids' Day, so it's an ongoing ritual. On the construction front, on East Cattati Avenue, just some report back on East Cattati Avenue, La Plaza Traffic Improvements, this is the stop sign behind the fire station there in Cub, Scout Hut, and it's just a, just a note that we can, the public, public works continues to get thank yous from residents back there for that, they really appreciate the stop sign, so it was a good safety improvement, as we kind of work around and do little safety improvements that come up as issues in town. And we also have a community meeting scheduled for Tuesday night, this is May 21st, for the Quail Hollow for Landline and Landscape Maintenance District to discuss the annual assessment and the need to remove a tree for sidewalk repair. Letters have gone out for the meeting, this is, just so you know, there's a redwood tree that's between the sidewalk and the fence at Aguirre and Myrtle, and it's pretty much destroyed the sidewalk, so that's what really it's, it's about, is removal, removal of that tree, we don't want to just go in there and remove it one day, so it's to have that discussion with the residents before we bring it to the council for the actual budgeting for that. So, anyway, that's scheduled for Tuesday night on the 21st, for those residents that are interested in that. And then, East Cattati Avenue Pavement Project, so the federal grant funding has been confirmed officially now, in other words, has been funded, the project's been funded, and the project is to bid this month, this is the reconstruction of East Cattati between the railroad tracks and Sunflower, the city limits there. And just a reminder again that, you know, fortunately, we were able to get the $700,000 grant because we had the required matching funds through Measure G, so that just, you know, multiplies the amount of resources we have to do these kind of improvements, and that, that segment of roadway's definitely in need of it. And then, the 2019 Street Construction Improvements, we're at 65% plans and specs now, and we expect to bid next month and construction in July and August. And so, just to refresh anyone's memory that maybe, or maybe doesn't know about which, what project that is, that's reconstruction of the remainder of the streets in, in the L, so-called L section of Cattati, as well as some paving on Benson and resurfacing East Cattati from one end to the other, essentially, and then also repaving a segment of Overwood Highway between East Cattati and William and George Street. So, that's, that's what the 2019 Street Construction Improvement Projects were, that we talked about earlier. And then, the West School Street Pathway Project, and the plans and specs are near complete, and we expect that we'll be ready to bid next month, or end of this month or early next month, and we'll notify the residents there in that area when the notice to proceed is given to the contractor, so they're aware that construction will begin. And the Park and Ride Project, this is the replacement lots up at the airport and down on Petaluma Boulevard South, that's also at 65% plans and specs, and it is going to Caltrans tomorrow, it's already been reviewed internally, and so it's going to Caltrans tomorrow, and this project's ahead of schedule, and the schedule currently is that we're bidding in the spring of 2020 and construction in 2020, summer, summer of 2020. So, that's well within the timeframes that we needed to be in for that agreement. And other notable activities, well, 1A repair started last week and are extending through this week, and the repairs, in case you're curious what they are, are that, and if you recall, maybe a year ago, there's a, right next to the well site, there's a house right there, and there was a resident that was complaining about the noise of the motor, and, yeah, so, as this pump was having issues already, and rather than just replace it with the, it's the kind of turbine pump that was, that was there right now, we're replacing it with what's called a submersible type pump, so the motor's underwater with the, with the pump, and should be a lot quieter, in addition to just the block wall that's there too, to mitigate sound, but it's always a bit of a challenge when you have a house right up against a well site, there's mechanical noises, but that, that was something we could do to definitely reduce the, some of the sound there, and also in the process, repair the pump that was having problems. And it's also, we're also doing some repairs to the well casing as well. And then, Cattati Park, there was a, there's like, I don't know what the official term is for it, but it's like a zip line kind of thing, where you slide across on the rail from one structure to the other end of the structure, and it had a, had a, there's a concrete part of that where you launch off, and it's covered in like rubber, like rubberized playground surface, and it had been worn down over the years, and so that's all getting replaced right now. It's a, it's not a very large area, but just a, so if someone drops off the handle, you know, they just land on something soft rather than a concrete floor. And on private development front, Kessin Ranch, there's some minor grading already that started, and the grading's expected to get more intense probably next week, once there's a little bit of rain projected for this week, so probably next week. And also, offsite sewer and water is scheduled to start next week, and this is, I think, primarily in Valparaiso Avenue. So, this is all done through an equipment permit with an approved traffic control plan, but there'll be suddenly a lot of activity there, so heads up on that. And then, on recreation, as was announced in the announcements up front, on Saturday, May 18th, we're hosting a Civic Center Park Workshop at 10:00 AM here at City Hall, and it's really to gain additional community input after the initial Parks Master Plan workshops for what they'd like to see at Civic Center Park and Caterfield behind City Hall here, and the primary reason is to really refine what that is, because that qualifies for a state parks grant, that field does, the area, so we want to make sure that we know, have a really good idea of what people are interested in before we bring it forward for formal approval, so that when we apply for the grant, it's fairly well thought out, you know, less conceptual than maybe some of the other ones. And then, on May 9th, we, this is already mentioned by one of the, by airs earlier, on May 9th, the city partnered with Yuba Bikes, this is a Cattati bike manufacturer, they manufacture like cargo kind of bikes, to host an Energizer Station for Bike to Work Day in front of the Smart Station, and it was put on by the Bike Coalition of Sonoma County, which we heard earlier tonight, thank you. And throughout the morning, we saw more than 50 people cycling to work or to school, including someone we know in this room, AKA the mayor, yeah, who had a chance to connect with them as they stopped up to pick snacks, stopped by to pick up snacks.
I didn't just stop to get snacks, let's be clear on that.
That's, that's what I heard, but it could be misinformation.
Were the train coming?
Wow.
All right, in, in late April, we started a junior tennis and adult tennis program at Sunflower Park on the recently renovated courts, and because of the immediate success, we're continuing to offer the classes, the instructors continuing to offer classes and actually add more classes, so it's a, it's great, because you never know when you start a new program, how much, you know, people don't know about it, so it takes a while to get going, but this one kind of immediately took off, so it's good. And then, the farmers market season will begin on June 6th this year and continue on Thursday nights throughout the summer from 4:30 to 7:30 PM each week in La Plaza Park, and the organizers are working hard to get new and additional produce, hot food, and goods vendors for each week, and that will feature live music, and Dustin with Farmster, I hear, will be down there as well, doing stuff, so hopefully it's a fun time. And then, our first summer movie in the park will take place on Friday, June 7th, at dusk, and we will be showing The Goonies, which shocked, shocked me, because, you know, we post all these on Facebook, and, and I cannot believe how many people liked The Goonies. I mean, it's like an ancient film, right? I remember it from when I was younger, but I thought, you know, we had this discussion when we were programming the movies earlier in the year, like, we'll have some current ones and then an older, older one, and I'm thinking, who's going to even remember the older one, you know? But that's the one everyone wants to go to, so it might be an overflow crowd on that night. But in The Goonies theme, prior to the movie, we're, we're going to host a scavenger hunt for children with prizes for the winners, so it should be a, a fun movie night. All right, so Rancho Cattati High School is now offering, they're offering career tracks, which is something new to them, and one of the career tracks is hospitality, tourism, and recreation, career technical education is what they call it, or CTE. It's a pathway for students this year, and they have partnered with, with us for the Hospitality II Course this coming year, so we're working with Rancho Cattati and the students there on ways to involve high school students with their community while fulfilling their educational requirements, and so I guess the main thing there is to stay tuned for, in the fall, for updates on potential events and projects coming to Cattati, basically designed by Rancho students, and that's, and, and the Cattati Recreation Department, so we're partnering with them, and they're assisting us and potentially coming up with ideas for community events, so that will be, that'll be fun when it, as it develops, be kind of nice to engage them in that way. So, lastly, and then I swear, I don't think I'm done talking, summer camp registration is now open, we're offering Cattati, Camp Cattati, sports camps, Lego camps, theater camps, gymnastic camps, Spanish camp, tennis camp, and of course, the Junior Farm Camp this summer, and some of them are already almost full, so if you want to get into one of those camps, better register soon, otherwise you may not have a place. And you can register online for our camps and our programs on the city website, and of course, any of this stuff, or anything else that you want to know about our programs or to volunteer an event, you can contact Ashley at 665-4222, or Wilson at cattatity.org, and our latest information, of course, is on our website and our Facebook page. And I think that's it, oh, except, there was a, last night, there was a hotel entitlement. So, anyway.
I'll comment on it.
Yeah, without all, leave it, thank you.
Yes, you were busy, you are busy. Any comments or question, Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. I actually do tonight, so you were talking about streets, and I seem to remember a few years ago, when MTC was working towards a regional revenue measure, they put out a pamphlet that indicated our street numbers compared to a few counties were lower, so I remember the time we pointed out, you, this, this isn't correct, these aren't current numbers, and I know since then, we've increased, what, at least probably five, they even care index points almost since then. I wonder if you have anything to share, just as where we're standing right now with streets, because I know the last few years, we've invested very heavily in that, that's unusual among cities, because it's a difficult thing to do, and I would imagine, since we have a firm that does work with us, using software to sort this, they probably have a database and have some idea, at least within their customer base, which I assume is large, how we stand. I'd like to ask you or Mr. Scott, if either of you have anything you can share.
Well, I'll just, I'll just start, and maybe you can add anything that maybe I missed. So, we, as I recall, we're currently, the pavement condition index in Cattati, the overall street condition index is 55 right now, which is based on the large group of cities that Streetsaver is, the, the program that inventories all these streets, yeah. For communities our size, we're in the top quarter, top quarter in terms of street condition, and with the five, the draft five-year CIP that we all spoke about a couple meetings ago, with the continued investment in the streets and that plan, we would be, we'd go from 55 to a PCI of about 70 over that period of time, over the five-year pavement period.
Which begs the question, if we're sitting in comparables in the top quarter, which I think is a pretty notable thing, actually, if we're able to make this full five years of investing locally in this manner, where would we be sitting then? Because 70 strikes me as a very, very high number. Any idea on that?
Yeah, we'd definitely be in the top 10%, if not better, and we'd be switching from, well, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer, would be switching from a rehabilitation mode, which is really expensive, street work, to preservation mode, doing much more cost-effective preservation techniques of, of crack sealing and slurry seals, which are about a fifth of the cost.
Yeah.
And so, so a little, little pain early with the budget, impact of the budget, but then, in, in four or five years, we're going to be seeing that back off and maintaining that 70%, 70 PSI, rather.
Good, well, that's really good to hear, I think somebody should let MTC know at some point, but I'm not too worried about that, so thank you for the update, I do appreciate that.
All right, any other questions or comments on the city manager's report? All right, seeing no one, we will move to item 14, city council member reports, and we will start with Councilmember Moore.
Excuse me, Mayor Swanson, did you need to open a public comment on the city manager's report first, or no?
No, I think that'll come at the later section, there's another public comment section coming up.
Okay. Yeah, the, I don't have anything, except for we, I did attend the most recent Chamber of Commerce meetings, and on June 6th will be the opening of the farmers market, and that'll be happening through the course of the summer, and then on June 15th will be the music festival in the park. So, those items are coming up, and the chamber's moving along, and membership is increasing, and things are going well.
Great, all right, thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey?
I just have a couple of reports, one, I attended the Water Advisory Committee meeting, and I'll just give a couple highlights on there. As part of this number in saving water partnership that we have, they held their annual eco-friendly garden tour, and the thing has grown in leaps and bounds, this year they actually had 42 gardens on tour, and they had 2,700 attendees, so it's been extremely successful, and they were very pleased with that. And secondly, there was a lot of information surrounding the Potter Valley Project, the relicensing agreement, for those of you who don't know, Potter Valley is owned by PG&E, and their license expires, and because of the financial situation of PG&E, they are not intending to re, redo their license, so basically, something has to be done there, so there's been a group that was put together by Jared Huffman to take a look at that, and so they've been making a little bit of progress, and now, since that meeting, I was asked as the chair of the WAC, as well as Drew McIntyre, who is the chair of the Technical Advisory Committee, to join in a group that's looking at that, so I have not attended a meeting, tomorrow will be my first meeting on, on that, but another, another committee for another water thing, so hopefully, you know, the intent is to try and see what regionally some folks, there's been a... been a lot of folks and stakeholders working on that. And I don't have all the players yet because I haven't been involved, but it sounds like something may be moving forward with that and Sonoma County may be involved. Then secondly, I attended the League of California Cities Legislative Action Day. Very interesting. There was a lot of stuff going on. We actually sat in on Scott Wiener's bill and there was a lot of public input on that, literally hours. We were in there for an hour and then we had to go meet, we met with Senator Dodd and Mark Levine and Mike McGuire. So we did get to see some of our representatives. So that was a very long and interesting day. And it happened to be the same day that the vaccine group was up there. And so the, the whole grounds were just filled with thousands of people with kids, so, and they were all over the halls and it was, it was very interesting. They had that on the TVs and that went on for, you know, 12, 15 hours worth of input on that. So it was a very, very worthwhile day, very interesting to see how things happen in Sacramento. So that's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Landman.
Yeah, let's see, a couple of small things. Excuse me. So yesterday, I chaired our SETA, our CPA meeting and I just wanted to mention, we took a look at preliminary budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. Happy to tell you, the most important thing we always look at, what sort of local match are they looking for? And our CPA is holding flat this year and SETA came very close with a small increase. However, they're also providing a lot more services, so Suzanne's argument was there's still money ahead there. But that's good news, particularly besides those two budgets, you had Mezur Amo, which is like about 11 separate budgets, each individual city. So I feel for Mr. Cameron, he has to put those together, but the good news, everything's tracking well and most of the projects are wrapping up very well in that, particularly the Highway 101 projects. I wanted to mention briefly related that a few weeks ago, I attended, along with Ms. Weaver, who isn't here, and numerous other people, Congressman Huffman convened a regional transportation meeting with transportation, bike advocates, a lot of different sectors related to transportation in his service area down at the Buck Center in Marin. And I just wanted to report out, he seems very interested in working to bring home projects for his region and is very open to that. And I take that to be a very good harbinger. So we're looking to see what we can do in concert with him. So that was his outreach and we were very pleased to have it. And that's my report for this meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I was able to stop by La Plaza Park for the Rotary's event on May 4th. So there were several people dressed up in Star Wars regalia and my friend's two-year-old enjoyed the jump house. And so that was, that was a lot of fun and they had some great music. And then this Friday should be the Open Farm event at Farmsters. They try to do it on the third Friday of the month from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. So you can come and sign in and sign those handy waivers that all of us attorneys like and then hang out with the baby goats and the piglets and the miniature horses that they have out there. So it's been, it's been a lot of fun watching the community get involved in that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Just a quick wrap-up from the last time we had a council meeting. We did have another Sonoma County Ag and Open Space meeting. And so from that meeting and discussions we've been having about what mayors and council members were concerned about at Ag and Open Space when it comes to the matching grant program, I just finished drafting a letter earlier this week, no, today's only Tuesday, must've been late last week, this retirement thing. It's all blurring into one big day. It's crazy. And so I drafted a letter that is supposed to go into our packets for our next meeting, which is in two weeks, and will then go out to Mayor Harrington is the chair, basically addressing all of the questions in there. And I think Mayor Hinton from Sebastopol, who had a number of issues and concerns, just never, something clicked at one of our meetings when we said, you know, this recusal process is not just for the three electeds that are on mayors and councils, that are on Ag and Open Space from the mayors and council members' appointments. It applies to everybody. So if you're, want to be on the matching grant subcommittee and if your city, if you're an elected and your city has applied, you should be recusing yourself. This is what we've always said. And it makes perfect sense for electeds, but if you're a board member or even an employee of a nonprofit or organization who's also applying for one, it applies to those people as well. And Mayor Hinton never understood that. She always seemed to think it was just, you know, just for electeds. So anyway, the questions that came in, because there was two letters from mayors and council members, one from the previous mayor Sebastopol, Patrick Slater, when he was the chair last year, and then from Chair Harrington. So that letter should be read and hopefully approved and then sent out after our meeting in a couple of weeks. And that'll go to Mayor Harrington. I also took part on the 27th of April, this is going back a ways, I know, at Rancho Katahdadi High School, their tag building dedication. The tag is the Theater Arts and Gymnasium. And I've never seen a gym that big in my life. I mean, it looks like a professional basketball gym. You could have multiple games going on at the same time, so they can host different tournaments there. They have this huge stage in the gymnasium, but it also, there's a wall that opens and it opens up to the theater side, because, you know, we walked around to the theater side just to see what was going on. It was a very impressive facility. And so we went, I went to the dedication of that. And if you ever happen to walk into that building, try not to look at these stories. There's these biographies, brief biographies of people in the community, which I was a part of, but I didn't realize that there'd be this really big shot of my face right on the wall. And it was, it's a kind of a frightening thing. We, you know, we had our two budget study sessions, of course, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about those. I was very interested in going on the 2nd of May to the Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting. I hadn't been to one because a representative never seems to miss a meeting. So it's the alternate, I never get to go, but I went anyway.
That's fun.
That's true and I couldn't make that. How embarrassing. I can make them now. I'm pretty sure I can. Okay, quickly, quickly. And of course, there was the Planning Commission meeting last night, which there were at least, I counted, over 60 people in this room. And kudos to staff in the conference room across the hallway here. They had the television set up, so it was just a slight few second delay from live and there was at one point eight or 10 people that were sitting in there watching the goings-on since there were no seats available. So great job to all the staff for putting all that together. That was very good. And again, great job for, to JP for his presentation too. I think he really did a great summary of where we are to date. And lastly, I just want to reiterate, somebody mentioned earlier, but there is an opening on the Planning Commission and applications must be received by the 23rd of May, which, as I look at my calendar, that's next Thursday. So just putting that information out there as well. All right. That is it for me and we will now go to item 15, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Anybody have anything? Mr. Beric.
Thank you. I have a suggestion for a future agenda item. How you go about hiring and interviewing major city staff, staff positions, staffers for open positions here in the city. I think it's very interesting what was discussed tonight, that apparently you all met with Mr. John Baker and did private interview. If you did that in a group, the public wants to know how that was not a violation of the Brown Act and not a serial meeting. You're not supposed to be interviewing potential staff members in private for positions with the city. We didn't do that with the police chief, we didn't do that with our city manager. It's very unorthodox. I want to hear how this is happening, that you're interviewing people of this caliber in private. The reason you bring a potential city employee of that stature before the public is so that you can get input from the public. Some of us may know him. Some of us may have actually good questions that you may want to ask the applicant and so forth. That's the vetting process. Even the police chief will go ahead and interview his potential officers, new officers in private, but then he will bring them before the city council for another public vetting. I don't understand this at all. I think you need to put it on the agenda and clarify it. Also would like to hear whether they're going to have another public workshop about the Paletti Ranch. A lot of us attended the one and only public workshop in this room with city council members on some ideas for the Paletti Ranch and Farmster project. We were promised more workshops. We haven't had any more workshops. There was nothing in concrete, how, what was going to happen, what, how the project was going to take shape and so forth. Also, at the last meeting, I talked about Super Burger had moved out of the location and what that might mean for Katahdadi. And you said, hey, George, that's a mistake. They moved. Well, we have a vacant location there. My point was, we have a vacant location. And also where they're moving, somebody moved out. An ice cream shop on the corner of Charles Street there, it moved out. What I would like to see from the city manager, if it's not too much to ask, is that he, when he's doing the report, give us a summation of which businesses are moving out of town? We don't need to know why. There are plenty of reasons why, I know. But who's moving out? Who's moving in? Who's applied for a business license? And so on and so forth. Plenty of businesses have left, happily and unhappily out of the town. And we need, the public needs to know that. We have a vacant building now there at Super Burger now and the new location, we never heard what happened to the nice people who had that ice cream shop. And this is an issue for Katahdadi. And as far as weed abatement's concerned, I'd like to see you do something about a weed abatement coming up now. No weed abatement has been done by the city so far, as this lady pointed out. You haven't cut one blade of grass. And we need some answers, how you're going to address the Katahdadi weed abatement ordinance. Thank you, folks.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address? Yes, please, come up.
I think somebody misunderstood. I was thanking you for attending to weed abatement, I mean, property that had weeds this high. I was, it was done. I didn't have to make a phone call.
Right. No, we understood that.
And, and, and including across from Frog Song, the burnout that was taken care of and I, and I knew it was city because I saw it was city that took care of that. And I was thanking you for it. And it was early. The issues with Super Burger moving, that, that was, and the ice cream place, that was, that's a thing that happened a long time ago.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I will, I'm not closing the public hearing. We'll just move on. That item is finished. And item, actually.
Do you close public comment on non-action?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll go ahead and close the public comment on non-action agenda items, but I'd like either the city manager or city attorney to address the issue Mr. Beric brought up about the process of interviewing potential employees.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, there's a recognized exception to the Brown Act, which is personnel exemption, appointment of public employee. And that exception allows a council to interview among the council members for that position. Every city I know of, not only throughout this county, but throughout the state of California, follows that practice. It's a, it's a routine process that is followed. And typically, the name of the interviewees are not put, nor are they required to be put on the actual agenda because you may have situations where someone is interviewing and hasn't told their current employer, et cetera. So it's simply an interview of an employee for an important position that is a position subject to appointment by the council, not other employee positions that are appointed by department heads, for example, is a recognized exception. There is no Brown Act violation.
Right. And we did have that as an agendized item.
Correct.
Mentioned that as a closed session opportunity and there was public comment.
Yes.
Afforded, but nobody spoke that evening, if I recall. And I believe that's in our city council binders too, that kind of information history. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
First of all, very glad to hear that because I was afraid something awful had happened by the way things sounded, but I do want to thank you seriously for making it clear that's a routine process that most of us who work in city councils are aware of. And also as far as Super Burger, I'm glad a couple of people from the public brought that up because it didn't escape my notice that their success in a few years in this town has put them in a position where they had to move for a slightly bigger location. And I look at that as a very good thing, so congratulations to them. It was a difficult way to get them to come here. We don't wish a fire on anybody, but I'm glad to see that things are going very well for Super Burger. So looking forward to giving them a lot of, a lot of dollars to them this summer, I suspect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And item 16 is, yeah, that's right. I was going to say, wait, didn't I just say that? No, I didn't. I was going to earlier. You know, I just received after the agenda was posted, I know that we did have a letter that came in just this afternoon, late this afternoon regarding parking restrictions. So that's been afforded and we have that. And are there any other comments from council members at this point? All right. Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 8:38.
Go Dubs.
Did you say ducks?
Dubs. 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 Dubs.